I'd now like to call this December 1st, 2011 Cookville City Council Meeting to order. Could we get a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. All right, item one, consider approval of agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item two, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on November 17th, 2011. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any questions? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to the consent agenda. Item three, consider awarding bid for turnout gear, sponsors the fire department. Item four, consider awarding bid for transformers, and sponsors electric department. Do you have a motion for approval on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to new business, item five. Hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance 111119, rezoning 2001 Fisk Road from HM Heavy Manufacturing to CI Commercial Industrial Mixed Use, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the location of this property is depicted on the screen. Here's an aerial view. In the current zoning, this request was submitted by Martin Fauch on behalf of the property owner Barry King. The property is located at 2001 Fisk Road. The purpose of the request is to allow the property to be used as a church. The property consists of approximately 4.7 acres and is contiguous with the property zoned as HM to the southeast and west, and with HM and the requested CI to the north. The property was most recently utilized as the location of Southland Brick and Block Company. And here's a photograph of the building that's located on the property. Churches are permitted uses in all zoning districts with the exception of HM and QM, which is Quarry and Mining District. The 2030 plan depicts this property as being best suited for general industrial purposes. However, rezoning the property to CI would allow the proposed use while allowing the property to be converted back to an industrial use should the church relocate. And this proposed rezoning has been approved by the planning commission as recommended by the planning department.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Questions from the council?
Have there been any complaints or any comments from any of the area residents?
We had none at the meeting, and we've received no calls at the office.
Anyone else? Questions, comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item six, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance 111120, annexation of South Willow Avenue area and adopt resolution 111116, adopting Plan of Services for same, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, this area consists of approximately 102 acres and is located off South Willow Avenue or Burgess Falls Road and Lee Seminary Road. This area is depicted on the screen. The proposed annexation was initiated due to city-funded infrastructure improvements in the study area related to the development of the Highlands Business/Industrial Park, which is located just west of the area. These improvements include the widening, realignment, and extension of Lee Seminary Road and the installation of public sewer through a portion of the area. Here's an aerial view of the properties. This is existing land use and also shows the utilities and the road extension and the proposed sewer installation. This area is located entirely within the city of Cookville urban growth boundary. Of course, the urban growth boundary is the area that was approved by the city and the county and ratified by the state in 1999, and it's the area in which the city has, is expected and authorized to annex over a 20-year period. Property owners in the proposed annexation area were notified by mail by the planning department prior to a public hearing held by the planning commission. They were also provided an information package on the proposed annexation. I'll go back to this aerial photograph. At the present time, the proposed area can be generally characterized as mixed density residential. It's been identified in our future land use plan or our 2030 plan as an area primarily best suited for commercial-industrial mixed-use development. The area has a limited amount of undeveloped land. There are 34 parcels in the area. Located on 23 of these 34 parcels are 52 residential housing units, of which 30 are mobile homes located in two mobile home parks. The estimated population in this area, based on the per household count from the 2010 census, is 115 persons. There are also approximately .95 miles of streets in the area, of which more than half is a state highway. The Plan of Services, which is resolution 111116 for the proposed annexation area, has been approved by the planning commission and provides as follows. Police and fire protection, building inspections, and codes enforcement, planning and zoning, parks and recreational services, refuse collection, and street maintenance will be provided on or within 30 days of the effective date of annexation, should the area be annexed. Water service to the proposed annexation area is currently provided by the Cookville Boat Dock Utility District, and the city's water service contract with the district does not require that it release its customers to the city. If the district does release the service area, expenditures of approximately $140,000 are estimated as necessary to upgrade the system. Any improvements necessary for the provision of fire protection will be completed within five years, either by the utility district according to its contract with the city, or by the city should the utility district release the area. As I stated in the opening statements, the city is in the process of extending sewer to a portion of the area. The estimated cost for providing sewer service to the remainder of the area, which is primarily along the southern end of Lee Seminary Road, is at $115,000. The unserved portions would receive sewer service when economically feasible and based upon the same criteria, standards, and policies used to determine the expansion of sewer service in the unserved portions of the present corporate limits. Property owners would not be required to pay for sewer service until the service is available to their property. The area is provided electrical service by Electric Cooperative. While the city has the capacity to serve the area, it can only do so with the approval of the co-op, and such approval is not anticipated. The city of Cookville, however, will pay the co-op for the revision of approximately 22 street lights in the area. The area is provided natural gas already by the city of Cookville. The current gas customers would have their rates reduced to the inside-city rate within approximately 60 days following annexation. Residents in the area would receive certain benefits as a result of annexation. These include improved police and fire protection, which includes a reduction of their ISO insurance, or fire insurance rating from Class 10 to Class 2, which could result in a significant savings on homeowners' insurance. They will also receive zoning protection, street lighting, brush, and bulk item pickup, and weekly garbage pickup. Natural gas customers would receive the inside-city rate, which is approximately 25% less than the outside-city rate. Of course, property owners would be required to pay city property tax. The current city property tax rate is 85 cents per $100 of assessed value. Based on the current tax appraisals, the average city property tax for a homeowner in the area would be $249.26. If this area is annexed, it wouldn't become effective until January of 2012. Therefore, the property owners would not be required to pay property tax until 2013. So they'd get all of 2012 with no property tax requirements. The cost for the revision of all services to the proposed annexation area is $266,000. This cost would include, would be reduced by $125,000 if the water utility district does not release the service area. And when you exclude the estimated cost for the revision of sewer, the estimated annual cost for providing services to the area is $10,000. The annual revenue to the city from property and state share taxes is estimated at $20,158. As previously stated, this area has been considered for annexation because of the Highland Business Park. When completed, the Lee Seminary Road will be extended through to, and become the primary entrance to the eastern part of the business, to the business park. This intersection will be signalized, and other approvals to South Willow Avenue will be completed. Improvements to the current southern end of Lee Seminary will also be considered, and this is one of the biggest issues that was discussed at the planning commission meeting, was how Lee Seminary currently jogs to the south, and the way traffic comes off of Burgess Falls Road in this area, and comes up through here. And that has been discussed, and the city will look at addressing that area should it be annexed. The approvals to Lee Seminary Road and the extension are depicted in our major street plan and are recommended in the 2030 plan. Zoning for this area, as I noted in the plan, indicates it should be commercial-industrial mixed use. The planning commission is recommending a split of this, with properties along the proposed extension, and the portion of Lee Seminary will be widened to be zoned as CI, commercial-industrial mixed use, and with the area to the south to be zoned as RS20, single-family residential. And this, at the time of the planning commission review, this appeared to be the wishes of most of the property owners in the area. Therefore, the, as I stated, the planning commission has approved this. The planning department also recommends for the annexation with the establishment of RS20 and CI zoning, and for approval of the Plan of Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
Have you gotten many calls regarding this?
I had one call today from a property owner, Kaysh Rekinaos, too, as opposed to the annexation. We also had one letter received, and I believe the council has a copy of that from a property owner that was opposed to the annexation.
I'd only gotten the one letter.
I did receive a call today from Kaysh Rekinaos, who owns property on Burgess Falls Road, and she's opposed to the annexation.
How many, how many houses does this affect, again, households?
Well, it has a little more than 50 dwelling units, with about 30 of those being mobile homes and two mobile home parks. There are 34 parcels in the area.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Mr. Mills?
Yes.
I think I asked this question in our work session, but I'd like you to, in our public forum, I'd like you to answer it again, if you could, would you please? Would you say that the improvements being done to the, by the city to this area would increase property values of the folks living in this area?
Yes, I would. If you can imagine, this will be the primary entrance to the business park for the next few years, and even when the fifth interchange is completed, it will still be the primary entrance from the eastern end of the business park. And we would expect, and with the new road extension and the improvements to Lee Seminary Road, to be quite a bit of redevelopment along this street. Of course, if you're a single-family homeowner that wants to be there, your property base would still go up, but you're going to see a lot of redevelopment in the area in the next few years.
And would you, would it be safe to say, and would you agree with that, even though, as you mentioned, the cost to the homeowner, given our property tax rate as it is, we've averaged around $249? Was that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Would you say, though, with the, with the police protection, fire protection, ISO rating going from a 10 to a 2, and with, again, with zoning protection, which people, that's hard, that's hard to put a value on, the cost of their gas going down 25%, would you, would it be safe to say, and would you agree, that this is pretty good value for the, for the homeowner there?
Well, in my opinion, it would be, but of course, the insurance rating of savings will depend on your insurance provider. Some insurance companies do not recognize fire insurance ratings, and property owners would not receive the reduction. But if your insurance company does, and I'm sure Mr. Swallows, Mayor Swallows can speak on this, if your insurance company does, you're going to see a substantial savings in your homeowner's premium.
So with increasing, with an increase in property value and all these benefits that the homeowner's going to get, and the potential for, for receiving a discount in their homeowner's insurance, it's a, it's a win. It sounds like, to me, it's like a win for the, for the homeowner that's there, and it's also a good deal for the city.
The other thing that's not often brought out is the, is the garbage pickup.
Yeah.
If you pay, somebody do that, and I don't know if anybody is in this area, but several areas we have annexed, people do, and it's typical they pay $18 to $20 a month for that. I mean, that's $240 savings right there.
Well, the comments I heard, it's planning permissions, the people commenting on the safety improvement, the extending Lee Seminary out to Willow and making a turn lane and putting a traffic light. That would increase the safety, because there was concern about people trying to get out onto Willow, a high rate of speed around that curve.
Just, just the extension should help alleviate that some, but as we discussed at the planning commission, and we talked about this at the work session, we will also look at what can be done in this, at this intersection. Even by extending this, you'll still have this, and that will need to be addressed. Of course, the best, the cheapest, and we talked about this, would be just to close this off and connect this, but we've since learned that some of the property owners, especially the business there, apparently does not want that. Or the other option that we looked at, and all this will have to be decided, is to come down and build, and do a cul-de-sac here, so that you don't go all the way through. These properties would still have access, if they desire, from Burgess Falls or South Willow, but this would be a dead-end street, and there are several homes located in here, and those property owners have indicated they'd like
They'd love that, yeah.
Something done.
And that's something, of course, that if we do pass this, this annexation, that we would take time and study that for a couple of months, on what we need to do. And we would also notify all the homeowners and business owners that are affected right there.
Anything we do, I would anticipate that we would at least hold a public hearing before the planning commission to solicit the opinions of the property owners. Of course, we would notify them also about what we try to do. If we do a cul-de-sac, or even the other option, we're most likely going to have to try to acquire some route of way to do that. So it's, this is not something that's going to happen immediate, but I think it is something we want to try to address.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Comments? Anything from the audience?
Move to approve.
Move to approve. We've got a motion and a second on the floor to approve.
We already had a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
My bad.
All right.
All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
I may have made that more complicated than it was. All right, item seven, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance 111221, amending the budgets of the General and Quality of Life Funds of the city of Cookville for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2012, sponsors Mr. Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, this, these two funds that we're amending, the general fund, we have $45,000 of state income tax, unanticipated, to help fund the increase in expenditures for adding six firefighters to our fire department and phasing out the student firefighter program. That is a increase in expenditures of $44,000 and the revenue of $45,000. And in the Quality of Life Fund, we are contributing, been asked to contribute $25,000 for improvements to the Cummins Falls, the new state park at Cummins Falls, and that would take that $25,000 out of the fund balance of the Quality of Life Fund. I'll be glad to answer any questions, and I would recommend it's approval.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. I have a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the council, comments?
And the $25,000 to Cummins Falls is a one-time?
Yes, it is. We were, both the county executive and, and I were pretty adamant that we didn't want to get into an annual appropriation to the state park. It first started out to help fund the first year for park rangers, but the state has agreed to fund those park rangers, so the Greenways people have asked that we contribute this one-time contribution to make some improvements to the park.
Yes, sir.
Jim, do they, did they mention what kind of improvements? I imagine it'd probably be safety things.
Safety.
Mr. Shipley, I'd like to ask you to clear up one little thing. The student firefighter program, when we say we're doing away with that, could you speak to that just a little bit? Because on that, you know, just, if you hear that, it doesn't sound like a good thing.
Right. It was a program we started under former chief Gene Smith. I think they did it, they may still be doing it at Auburn University. And it sounded like a really great idea, and you have 12 firefighters, and basically pay their tuition to go to school, and they work as firefighters. The problem with that is getting those 12 people to do that and stay with it. Once you, it costs quite a bit of money to send them to the academy and train them, and then they need some OJT after they get there. Takes a couple of years to get them up to speed to be a good firefighter, and even if they stay the full four years, it turned out to be too big of an investment for such a short period of time. And we have had a lot of trouble having enough people to volunteer for the program.
On an average, how many completed the full four years and stayed here?
Chief, you got any idea?
We have about three.
Three. And how many, how many have started the program from the time that it, of its inception?
I couldn't tell you, but we were constantly training about four to five a year.
Okay.
Very rarely we ever could get up to that twelve.
Okay.
It's been in place now for, what, five or six years?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not a good track.
Mm-mm.
Well, we tried. It's a good idea, but if we can't get them to stick around, we can't, you know. Anything else? Any questions, comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item eight. Consider approval of purchase of Homatro Rescue Tool, AKA the Jaws of Life. Sponsors Fire Department, Chief Roger Fuquey.
Mayor and council, back in 2002, we received a grant to purchase the equipment. And we went with a different brand, and mismatching hydraulic equipments, it didn't turn out too well. We had, constantly had problems from the very beginning. They were here several times a month and tried to work on it, and eventually it went back to the factory in October of 2010. They kept it until July of 11th this year, and sent it back to the vendor, and it still wasn't fixed, and they had to send it back. And at that time, I started negotiating with the president of the company to get a refund, and we got that in September. So due to the safety of the equipment and the people operating it, I recommend we just do a single-source provider. I'll ask council for approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council? I think, oddly enough, one of the other brand names, other than the Homatro, was it the hearse? We all agreed that nobody wanted to be rescued by a hearse when it came to Jaws of Life.
You might be, if you were trapped in a car.
All right, any questions from the audience, comments? All right, seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, chief. Item nine, consider awarding bids for dump truck and backhoe, Public Works, Gas, and Water Quality Control Departments, and sponsor is going to be Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, I'll handle these items collectively, if that's your wishes, instead of going one at a time. We and the other Public Works and Gas Department budgeted backhoes and dump trucks, and we collectively got together, put the specs together, and put the items out to bid. We have Nortrack South was the backhoe low bidder, $72,500 was the base price. We've got the water departments with the two buckets that were specced in there were $74,711.00, and Public Works was $73,825. On the dump trucks, Gas Department, Water Quality, and the Public Works were also specking out some dump trucks that were also budgeted. The low price, meaning spec, was the Landmark International, $76,747.23 each. And then there, you can see that the numbers there collectively were each department's totals, and we'd recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the council? Questions, comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to item 10. Consider approval of emergency repair of pump shaft at the wastewater treatment plant, Water Quality Control Department, sponsors Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, while replacing a damaged bearing at one of our large screw pumps at our wastewater treatment plant, there was a crack discovered in one of the, on the shaft. Plant personnel checked with the original equipment manufacturer and tried to obtain a replacement part. The problem with that was the lead time was eight weeks, and we, if high flows, we experienced high flows at the plant, that meant we would have to probably have a $4,000 pump per week, the cost, to have sitting there just in case we had some high flows. So we went to a local company here in town, Jet Fab, and they were able to manufacture that for us, and we got that, and was able to get that back in operation in about three days. And the total cost of that repair was $11,591.98. This is a picture of the, one of the screw pumps on the, on the screen, and the bearing is setting up here at this area. It attaches the screw lift to the motor housing. This is the part that was broken, and this is the piece that they take and machine down. They take a, basically a stock piece of steel, machine it down to spec, and then get it all pressed back in, put everything back. We pick it up, and then put it all back together. And we'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council?
Mr. Kelly, you said that this part was able to be manufactured, or here in Cookville?
They could manufacture it, if we were able to get them the specs and measure, based on bearing measurements. They could, they could take the part, they could take the dimensions and build it, if they can do that.
Well, I think that's neat that it
Oh, yeah.
That we were able to keep it in the city of Cookville.
Yes.
Do you have anything that's not an emergency?
These things are like, but this is a small piece, you know, you've got a $30,000, $30 million, sort of like replacing a headlight on your car, you know, cost-wise, so it's, it's bigger items, but in the scheme of things, it's not a big thing. But it goes over our purchasing power, so we need to get your
I understand. James Mills told me that.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, I have, I do have one last thing here before we open up the floor. I have a proclamation to read, and this is for Ms. Gail Fowler, who cannot be with us. She's not feeling well tonight. I hope she's watching on TV. Whereas Gail Fluger Fowler hails from Henry County and is a Paris, Tennessee native, and whereas Gail has resided in Cookville, Tennessee, for many years and is now considered one of Cookville's own, she is active in the community and employed by the city of Cookville, and whereas Gail has a tremendous sense of pride for her hometown and cherishes her family and many friends in Henry County, and whereas the Henry County High School Patriot Football Team has advanced for the first time to the Blue Cross Blue Shield Bowl for the state tournament, and will visit Cookville, Tennessee, December 2nd, 2011. And whereas Gail Fowler has an excitement that cannot be contained regarding hosting her hometown in Cookville, and has worked diligently as an ambassador to the Patriot Football Team, and now therefore I, Matt Swallows, mayor of the city of Cookville, do hereby proclaim a profound sense of appreciation for Gail Fluger Fowler for her exceptional enthusiasm, hometown spirit, and pride for community this first day of December, 2011. Thank you, Gail. I hope you're watching. Now is the part of the meeting where we open the floor to citizens and/or delegations to come forward and pretty much say anything's on your mind. We ask that you limit it to three minutes, and just state your name, tell us who you are. So the floor is open if anybody would like to say anything. All right. Council members?
Well, we need to make sure everybody knows about the Christmas parade on Monday, and that's at 7:00. And then the Christmas tree lighting for the city of Cookville is at 5:30?
Six.
No.
6:30.
6:30. And then at 5:30, we're going to be doing an opening for Dogwood Park.
Correct.
So Monday night, there's going to be a lot of things going on in the city of Cookville.
And we hope it's not raining.
Yes.
Snowing.
Anyone else? Do want to mention that, of course, after reading that proclamation, you can probably imagine the football, state football championships are in imagine the football, state football championships are in town starting this afternoon. We've already had one game, I don't know if it's finished yet, probably is, another one at seven o'clock, and then we have three games tomorrow and three games Saturday. And this council was only really in charge of the weather, of the weather for the, for the tournament, because it looks like it's going to be beautiful. But we'd like for everybody to come out and, and support that, that's a, that's a really big deal to a lot of families and a lot of kids, and it's something they'll remember the rest of their lives, and it's also great for Cookeville. So if you have time and find time in your day, go over and check out a game if you can. Anything else? Do want to recognize the students, we have some students. I'm, I'm assuming from a journalism class at Tech. Thank you for coming. Like you to come to every meeting, and you've actually had good attendance, so. Nothing else?